Next up is Ms. Amanda Allison. You gonna, no? Oh, I'm so sorry, Gabriel Bono. Your name is there. Both of your names were there.
Thank you, Trustee Bishop. Ms. Allison offered to step in for me, but I told her I would do it. So, sorry for the confusion. It's my fault. I'm going to start off with Ms. Johnin. Katie, you want, you got to come up? Want to stand up? Just stand up. Ms. Johnin loves the attention. So, if all of you could just look at her right now, she just absolutely loves the spotlight. Don't glare too much because I'm bald. We don't want to blind everybody in the auditorium. So, Ms. Johnin began her career at Ontario Middle and High School since September of 2022. Ms. Johnin was a pleasure to work with and is always willing to help in any way. His rapport with students makes him a beloved teacher in our district. Since coming to Ontario, Ms. Johnin has volunteered often. He freely assists science Olympads, chaperones often, and is always willing to cover a class when called upon. He also stepped in and joined the facilities committee and has always wonderful input on that committee. In the spring, he was an assistant coach for Modified Track and also covered homework help and fills in wherever needed. He often stays after school to help students complete projects and regularly attends students' extracurricular activities. Ms. Johnin's technology expertise and experience has been a huge asset to the students of Ontario. He has updated the curriculum and technology, including but not limited to integrating robotics and CAD programming at the middle school level. He has created a welcoming and up-to-date classroom environment. And so, because of all of those things, we are very pleased to bestow tenure on Ms. Johnin. Congratulations. Is Ms. Prodi here? Ms. Prodi began her career at Ontario Middle School as a leave replacement in November of 2020, but on August 1st, 2021, she was hired in a probationary tenure track position because we got very lucky. For the past four years, she has filled the role as middle school science teacher and most recently, a living environment teacher. She has also taken upon herself to get certified in physics, which is, as Ms. Laffin said to me earlier, "You are a unicorn." We are incredibly, incredibly lucky and you are an asset to our students and the district. And it has been our pleasure watching Ms. Prodi evolve in her teaching career. Her background was in quality control in manufacturing plants. She has brought the real-world experience to the classroom. She often highlights for students all the job opportunities that science has to offer. During her time here, she has embraced the recent New York State inquiry-based standards in science. She has helped rewrite our middle school science curriculum, which includes being acutely accustomed on the latest required science labs in grades six, seven, and eight. And she integrates technology regularly in her daily lessons and also works on increasing rigor in her classes. During her time here, she has been an integral part of the middle school community. She is the assistant coach for Science Olympiad, attends field trips with enthusiasm, and frequently volunteers to cover classes and supervision needs. And so, based on all of that, we are very, very pleased to bestow tenure on Ms. Prodi.
Next up is Ms. Amanda Allison. You gonna, no? Oh, I'm so sorry, Gabriel Bono. Your name is there. Both of your names were there.
Thank you, Trustee Bishop. Ms. Allison offered to step in for me, but I told her I would do it. So, sorry for the confusion. It's my fault. I'm going to start off with Ms. Johnin. Katie, you want, you got to come up? Want to stand up? Just stand up. Ms. Johnin loves the attention. So, if all of you could just look at her right now, she just absolutely loves the spotlight. Don't glare too much because I'm bald. We don't want to blind everybody in the auditorium. So, Ms. Johnin began her career in Phoenisha Elementary in 2019 as a monitor. She was then hired as a teaching assistant in July 2021. Last year, Ms. Johnin was transferred to Bennett as a fourth-grade self-contained teaching assistant under the direction of Ms. Morris, who was a teacher of the class. They presented us as a seamless team. Ms. Johnin was extremely independent and acclimated well to Bennett when it was Bennett last year. It's a totally different school this year, as everybody knows. She offered to be an after-school advisor and taught student sign language last year. And she also taught some of the staff. We all jumped in and all learned a little bit of sign language. It was extremely popular. She's extremely popular among the students and staff, and we all learn from Katie every day. This year, I purposely moved her to, away from Ms. Morris and into Ms. Gordon's class because I knew Ms. Gordon was going to be on maternity leave. And this is just a strength to Ms. Johnin for all that she is as a teaching assistant. And, excuse me, I've lost my place here. I did so because she possesses so many skills, and her educational experience allowed us to take advantage of Ms. Gordon's void. In addition to her assignment this year, Ms. Johnin has volunteered to be our yearbook advisor. You see her often at every event taking photos, and she's also a very active member of our PBIS team. Ms. Johnin continues to prove that she has a strong work ethic and is dedicated to our students. She is a tremendous asset to Bennett and to this district. I'm proud to say that she's part of our community and so glad that she's getting tenure. Anyway, Mr. Blank began his career at Bennett Elementary School in 2019. He was transferred to Bennett, and I don't have the pleasure of saying I hired him, but his natural leadership and playful interactions with students are extremely evident to everyone. And he's been a part of our therapeutic crisis team and part of the MAPS team. He is extremely well-trained. He's so appropriate, and he's able to manage very difficult situations. In previous years, he served as a drama director for us at Bennett. The staff often appreciates and continues to use his theatrical skills to gain the attention of large groups. He can bellow. Mr. Blank is extremely popular among students. He's very well-respected. Thank you for that. He is a pleasure to work with. He has such a pleasant demeanor, a very strong work ethic. I can say that. And dedication. He's truly, truly an asset, and I have to say that he's the only teaching assistant to go on a slip and slide with me and join in the fun with the students. So, we actually have a photo of that, but we can't reveal it in public. It's without hesitation and great honor and pride that Mr. Blank be a full member of our faculty. Mr. Muggie. Mr. Muggie is our E&amp;L teacher, and he began his career in 2021. And he was in third grade in Phoenisha way back when. He's co-taught in social studies and science at Bennett. In 2022, 23, he was in first grade and third grade over Woodstock. Last year, he was in kindergarten and second grade, both at Woodstock and then fifth grade at Bennett. And I'm just happy to say this year, he's full-time at Bennett and just making sure every student at every grade level is succeeding. I'm sure you're happy not to be driving all over the district for the first time. I find Mr. Muggie to be an honest and forthright individual who is a consummate team player. He adds to the positive culture and climate of the entire school by creating interactive student-faculty bulletin board every single year. It's thematically different every year in which professionals post material and students have to guess on... This year, he's taken pictures, close-ups, of our eyes, and the students have to guess what teacher's eyes are posted on the board. Yes, I can't even recognize my own eyes, so it's well done. In 2022, '23, he was in first grade and third grade over at Woodstock. Last year? Last year, he was in kindergarten and second grade, both at Woodstock and then fifth grade at Bennett. And I'm just happy to say this year, he's full-time at Bennett. And just making sure every student at every grade level is succeeding. I'm sure you're happy not to be driving all over the district for the first time. I find Mr. Muggie to be an honest and forthright individual who is a consummate team player. He adds to the positive culture and climate of the entire school by creating interactive student-faculty bulletin board every single year. It's thematically different every year in which professionals post material and students have to guess on... Different features. This year, he's taken pictures, close-ups, of our eyes. And the students have to guess what teacher's eyes are posted on the board. Yes, I can't even recognize my own eyes, so it's well done. The kids absolutely love that. He also helps with dismissal every single day. He just joins in and he helps give directions if we have buses that are late and make sure that he helps teachers get the kids to where they need to be. It's worth great pride and pleasure that Rich is a part of the Bennett faculty. I'm happy to have you aboard. I'm happy to have you here, too. Richard Muggie, everybody. Take your time.
Mr. Richards.
So I'm going to have Jessica Kowalski come down. She also loves the attention. I am honored to recommend Jessica Kowalski for tenure in the Ontario Central School District. Ms. Kowalski has proven herself to be an exceptional teaching assistant who brings remarkable dedication and skill to our elementary classrooms. Throughout her tenure, she has consistently demonstrated an extraordinary ability to support students, particularly in kindergarten and the first-grade settings. Her professional journey showcases not just competence, but a genuine passion for education that goes far beyond the typical job expectations. What sets Ms. Kowalski apart is her remarkable communication skills and her deeply student-centered approach. She has an intuitive understanding of individual student needs, adapting her support to ensure each child receives personalized attention. Her versatility is evident in her seamless transitions from substitute monitor to full-time teaching assistant while always maintaining a high standard of professional excellence. Her collaborative spirit and commitment to student development make her an invaluable member of our school community. Ms. Kowalski does not simply fulfill her job requirements. She goes above and beyond, creating meaningful connections with her students, supporting teaching staff, and contributing to the overall positive learning environment of Woodstock Elementary. It is with absolute confidence I recommend Jessica Kowalski for tenure. Erica. So I wanted to enthusiastically recommend Erica McLean for tenure. Since joining Ontario Central School District after graduating from the College of St. Rose, Ms. McLean has consistently demonstrated exceptional teaching skills and a profound commitment to student learning. Ms. McLean has proven herself to be an outstanding educator, skillfully teaching fourth and fifth grade mathematics, science, and social studies. Her ability to incorporate innovative, hands-on learning experiences sets her apart as an exceptional teacher. From engaging projects about local history to interactive science fair demonstrations, she creates dynamic learning environments that inspire student curiosity and academic growth. Her deep understanding of learning standards, combined with her creative instructional approach, enables students to collaborate effectively and make significant academic progress. Ms. McLean's classroom is a model of educational excellence, characterized by thoughtful, small-group work, meaningful co-teaching strategies, and a genuine passion for student development. As her principal, I can confidently state that Ms. McLean is not just a teacher, but a true educational leader who will continue to positively impact our school community. I wholeheartedly recommend her for tenure.
The following named instructional personnel, having served a period of probationary status consistent with the education law of the state of New York and provisions of the Commissioner's regulations, and having received continuing satisfactory evaluations of performance, are hereby recommended by the Superintendent of Schools for approval for tenure status. With a probationary period of 7/15/2022 to 7/14/2025, Certified Technology Teacher Douglas Sanders hereby receives tenure on 7/15/2025. With a probationary period of 7/15/20... I'm sorry, starting over. With a probationary period of 8/1/2021 to 7/31/2025, Certified Science Teacher Shayna Prayati hereby receives tenure on 8/1/2025. With a probationary period of 8/1/2021 to 7/31/2025, Certified Teaching Assistant Adam Blank hereby receives tenure on 8/1/2025. With a probationary period of 8/1/2021 to 7/31/2025, Certified Teaching Assistant Catherine Johnin hereby receives tenure on 8/1/2025. With a probationary period of 9/1/2021 to 8/31/2025, Certified Teaching Assistant Jessica Kowalski hereby receives tenure on 9/1/2025. With a probationary period of 9/1/2021 to 8/31/2025, Certified Elementary Teacher Erica McLean hereby receives tenure on 9/1/2025. With a probationary period of 9/1/2021 to 8/31/2025, Certified ENL Teacher Richard Muggie hereby receives tenure on 9/1/2025. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Hemingway Lynch. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Congratulations.
The next section of our agenda is about retirement, and we have an incredible group of retirees here tonight, so I wanted to just say a few words. Today, we gather to recognize and celebrate the retirement of our long-serving administrator, teachers, and staff, individuals who have dedicated their careers to shaping the hearts and minds of our students. Your years of service have left an indelible mark on our schools and community. You've nurtured curiosity, supported growth, and guided countless students toward their full potential. Whether in the classroom, the office, the library, or behind the scenes, your work has been the foundation of our district's success. Retirement marks the close of one chapter and the beginning of another. While we will deeply miss your presence, wisdom, and care, we are filled with gratitude for the legacy you leave behind, a legacy of compassion, commitment, and unwavering service. So, on behalf of the entire district, thank you. We do wish you joy, rest, and new adventures, which I'm sure there will be lots of. And you will always be a part of the fabric of this community. We are going to go through and call each retiree up and give you a gift and wish you well in your retirement.
The Board of Education hereby recognizes the retirees. Effective 8/31/24, Dorothy Giambioni, custodial worker. Effective 11/1/2024, Marguerite Ampel, typist. Effective 5/31/2025, Rebecca Evans, senior typist. Effective 6/30/2025, Melanie Ahouse, teaching assistant. Effective 6/30/2025, Richard Deruvo, science teacher. Effective 6/30/2025, Patricia Knight, cook manager. Effective 6/30/2025, Leigh Anne Kuhn, special education teacher. Effective 6/30/2025, Karen McKenna, elementary orchestra director. Effective 6/30/2025, Sharon McInerney, second-grade teacher. Effective 6/30/2025, Shelley Savachi, librarian. Effective 6/30/2025, Dieter Schimmelfinning, assistant principal. Effective 6/30/2025, Sandra Shultis, teaching assistant. And the Board of Education thanks student representative Olivia McHugh for her service. And now we have a 20-minute break for a celebration. There are cookies outside in the hallway, I believe. And refreshments. Item 4.01, we are going to hear from our architect and construction manager and who have a discussion with the board. Members of Clark Patterson Lee and Schoolhouse Constructions, Stephanie Wisnewski, CJ Goodwin, and Eric Robert will be available to answer questions from the board regarding the Capitol Project. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. CJ Goodwin with Schoolhouse. Eric apologizes he was unable to make it.
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Wisnewski with CPL.
So how would we like to do this?
Do you want us to read our questions? And then when we, I guess when we go through these questions, if there are any further questions, we could just ask them?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, I'll start off. How would eliminating the 10 classrooms, library upgrades, cafeteria upgrades, and security vestibule at Bennett, from the Bennett construction plan affect our New York State building aid?
I can answer that one. So your building aid units are determined based on your classroom count, which is based on your enrollment numbers. So if you weren't to do the 10 classrooms, you wouldn't get any building aid on the other work because the classrooms are the most aided component. And that's how SED determines your building aid for elementary grade level. It's by the general classroom numbers. So if all your population were to be in Bennett, your enrollment numbers would support the need for those additional classrooms, thus maximizing the amount of building aid you would get. So if you take the classrooms out, you're potentially going to affect the aid you would get for the other renovations you would want to do there, like the gym addition or the music classroom addition, stuff like that.
Thank you. And then trustees, as you see your questions on the sheet, please feel free to go ahead and just read your questions.
Okay, so I'm, just so that I understand, so New York State's state awards funding for classrooms in particular. And, but you said it could potentially affect, and I understand the piece about how if we have a bigger cohort at Bennett, there'll be more children to build more classrooms for. But you said it might, it would potentially affect other things like the gym or the this or the that. And I'm, so I'm, there's a little, I'm trying to put together how the aid is for classrooms, but it could potentially do other things. Could you explain that to me?
So you get the most building aid on instructional space, which would be your classrooms. You'd still get some percentage of aid for other work, renovation work, such like that. But as a whole, for your project, when you're looking at the project as a whole, the most aid you're getting is on those classrooms. So if you take the classrooms out, the amount of aid you're going to get is going to go down.
And I'll just add, classrooms are the cheapest things typically to build. So you usually gain a little bit of cash as you build the more classrooms, and you can use that to pay for the difference of other instructional spaces.
So, yeah, that was a question. So you can, once you're allotted your funding, as long as you fulfill your requirement of building the classrooms, you can, you can put it towards other things. Okay.
Trustee Goodrich, did you have a question? Okay. Trustee Lynch?
I just want to say thank you. This could go on forever, so I promise to stick to the script. But it just, it just raised a question for me. Then the other proposals, the other proposed spaces at the elementary school, are they any of those considered instructional spaces then? Or when you say instructional, does that just mean an actual classroom? Like, would, could you consider, you know, PE, you know, for the gym or that kind of thing, part of the instructional work?
Yeah, it's, it gets some aid. It's just not going to get as much as a general classroom, just the way that SED figures it out. It's a percentage, yeah.
So our, our building aid percentage for our district was always sort of quoted as 30, 31% roughly. So does that mean, is that 31% number actually an average of, I don't understand if it depends on what you're building. Like, if, if classrooms rated at a higher rate, is that, is that number higher than 31% and others are lower? How do we get to 31% that way?
That percentage, I believe, stays the same. What changes is when they look at the project as a whole that you submit up to the state for their review, when they reevaluate your aid. It's based on enrollment. The enrollment number, with elementary schools, the enrollment number they look at, and then they figure out based on that enrollment, how many classrooms you are allowed to have. And then you get building aid units per classroom. And that's what helps determine the overall aid on that building, or that scope of work, I should say. So it kind of depends a little bit on what project you're doing, on how much aid you're going to get on that project. But I think your 31% number stays. That, that's something that's determined from the state by other factors.
How is the budget of Bennett affected if the 10 classrooms, 10 new classrooms are not built? If the building is not being outfitted for additional students, would any of the other renovations at Bennett be reduced or removed? If the classrooms are not to be built with this proposition, but possibly in the future, could we still add on the security vestibule and other additions to the side of the building where the safety lane will be, and in the future, add five or 10 new classrooms to the north side of the building or elsewhere?
You can start with the classroom.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. We would save the cost of the classrooms for sure because you wouldn't build them. But the aid part would be less, as Stephanie had said, because it would be moving what's been included in the project for other planned classrooms. And then the security vestibule can be done at whatever point, wherever, you know, whether you have the classrooms or not, we could always do an addition that's just the security vestibule too. Or I think we've discussed the existing entry could become the secure vestibule, I'm sorry, become the secure vestibule where it is now.
So, I think for Bennett, our security vestibule was on the far, if you're looking at the building from down below, on the far left-hand side. But that was assuming we were going to put 10 classrooms over there, right? So, if we didn't build the classrooms, we'd have to put the security vestibule someplace else, closer in. And then if, when we built the classrooms, we'd have to move the security vestibule to the left if, if that's where we wanted it, correct?
That could be one option. From my understanding, the thought was always to still have that existing main entrance used for buses. So, if you were to put a security vestibule there now, if you're not doing the 10 classroom addition, you could potentially still be using that as your entrance for your bus route, even if you were to build the 10 classroom addition down the road. We wouldn't necessarily move it or demolish that work that was done. But there is an option, you could potentially build the security vestibule on that far left side where the classroom addition was proposed with the new drop-off move, safety lane for visitors in a refined layout where maybe not all the classrooms were built, but maybe only a few classrooms. There's, there's a ton of different options you can do for reducing the number of classrooms and still have that security entrance at that in original location that we were anticipating.
So, getting back to the, so, let's say instead of putting in 10 classrooms, we put in, I don't know, four. Now, does that mean we're going to get less aid for the gym? Is that the way that works out?
It's not really a straight answer. I mean, with SED, it's kind of like working with them, like, you know, you kind of got to work with them, show them your intentions, what you're planning to do, what, what the master plan is, you know. The earlier we talk with SED, part of the process is there's a whole preliminary review submission that has to be done for any additions on the school. And that's when you really would work with SED to show them the plan, to figure out the aid that they would give. And if you're not, if they're, you're not happy with their response, you can, you can work with them and, you know, engage and prove your need for that space and then hope they would give you the aid you were anticipating.
It, it sounds like SED is unpredictable or, you know, just, it can be. I'm just curious how they look at projects. So, you go to them with a master plan, sort of a vision. Do they look at, you know, how the, do they do their own look at the district and is it widely supported? Do they care, like, once they grant the money, are they, are they, are they also investing in the future of the district, I guess, is what I'm asking? Is that the kind of participation or is it just like?
It falls on us working with the district, your architect and coming up, there's certain guideline for documents they want as part of that preliminary review submission. So, they'll ask for what they call a facilities needs assessment letter from the district. They'll want your enrollment studies submitted, estimates for the scope of work, just, they ask for a lot of information to help them in determining that. They have formulas for how they determine the aid based on the enrollment and things like that. So, as long as we're hitting what they're asking for, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't get the maximum aid for the project as we're putting it up to them anticipating. It would only be if like the enrollment didn't support the project. But that's something that we work with the district to look at, to make sure the project we're putting forward would hopefully be supported by SED.
I'm trying to, I don't know if I can put this in words, but like, so, it's pretty objective. They're just looking for straight answers.
It is a very bureaucratic process.
Okay. There's no, like, there's no, like, this is why we're doing it. Oh, that sounds like an amazing thing for your students, they should have.
It's meant to be unbiased.
Unbiased. I understand. Okay, great. That answers my question. Thank you.
Many, excuse me, many community members shared concerns via exit polling, social media, and front door conversations about the $70.5 million bond in terms of how elaborate the proposed upgrades were. Inspirational add-ons like the food truck hookup and art gallery and the Bennett entrance and a student commons mid-campus were a few items that were really concerned some of our more senior community members who are perhaps on fixed incomes. What items could we trim from the current prop that wouldn't impact educational success?
So, the food truck hookups, the student commons, whether we reduce classrooms or things like that, I mean, parking lot areas. The other challenge with that particular question is a lot of our pieces sort of are symbiotic with other pieces. So, for the addition, we have to do certain things. The addition takes up a parking lot in the playground area that has to move, you know, and then the circulation has to happen for that. So, a lot of those pieces sort of tie together. There are certainly areas where we can work to adjust, modify the budget. I mean, with the vote going down, that you kind of have the opportunity to sort of rethink that process and listen to what the voters have said and sort of put together a new idea. And we would be part of helping in that process. But the other easy piece is if you want to do pieces of things, which is part of what this question is, that's always a possibility. It's just with certain things like the food truck, the cheapest part of that process is literally the outlet. Digging, putting a conduit in the ground, waiting to put the wire in, and actually the outlet, that's probably the cheapest piece. But digging through the site, putting the conduit in and leaving it for the future, that's probably still the more expensive piece. Is it 90 percent, 10 percent? No. Is it more like 60, 40? Probably.
Do you want to take that one, Clark?
Okay. Given that New York State Education Department designates middle school as grades five through eight, what would be the cost of preparing up to our middle school, high school, and receive fifth graders? I couldn't support this move unless there was a clear physical boundary between middle school and high school. Would we need to build a separate gym, locker rooms, cafeteria, auditorium, counseling suite, nurse's office, principal office, et cetera? What would that cost be? I understand that we may not have the luxury of upgrades should we lose several million dollars in New York State Foundation aid. And the bullet, will CPL architects need to have time to design the five through eight changes to the middle school? And how long would that take to show us inspirational early drafts of that architectural changes?
Clark, before Stephanie answers a chunk of that, I guess my one question is, when you say a separation, do you mean fifth through eighth would never interact with nine through 12? As in there'd be a physical separation in the building and duplication of everything? Or is there some middle ground in that?
I really wrote the beginning of that question.
Okay. Sorry.
And I guess I'm just thinking that, you know, there are times, there are shared hallways, you know.
That's why I asked.
For, for students to get from, you know, point A to like the cafeteria or to the library, things like that. And I think that during high-traffic times, you know, it, it could be a little intimidating for fifth graders to be in the halls with seniors. So, that was my question. I don't, I don't know what it would look like, but I just wondered if, if there's a possibility that something like that could happen.
Yeah. From my experience, I'm not trying to be facetious, but I could do almost anything, right? It's a question of time and money and whether that actually works with your community. I went to a school seven through 12, all in one building, so I was with ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th graders. Intimidating, no, but if you had older siblings, you always have that dynamic. We also always rode the same bus, which I suspect would happen in this case regardless of whether it was five, six, seven, and eight. But the other thing I was going to add is, in my time doing K through 12, I don't know of a ton of conjoined buildings that don't share kitchen, cafeteria, gymnasium, auditorium, nurse, main office, but not necessarily, maybe middle school principal, but you know what I mean? There may be separate social workers, psychology, all that stuff. But a lot of those are still shared inside of the building. And then there's a whole aid piece of that too with what is designated for middle school versus high school and population and all that. So, it's not, by any means impossible. I think it's a little more complicated than this building, but it just depends on what you guys really want to do at that point. Sorry.
I think you hit it, unless there's additional questions. I think he hit it. I mean, we have to watch with separating the grade levels too. If you want actual barriers, we have to look into like making sure we're not creating dead-end corridors and things like that. So, we might not be physically able to put up these walls, partitions to separate them because we have to leave that option for fire safety to get out of the building, to move around the building freely. So, it's going to come down to more of a logistics and like how the school operates and if the students are aware of where they can and can't go. When you start to try to really separate them with permanent barriers, you know, you might need more space and you don't really have the space on the site right at that middle school, high school location.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've given this question a lot of thought and I have different ideas about it now, but you made a really good point, CJ, in that they would be riding the bus together.
Right.
So, you know, that, there's no separation there.
And it's also.
You know, I mean, there can be separation, obviously, on a bus, younger kids in the front, older kids in the back or whatever, but, but, you know, there's just a lot to consider. But thank you for planting that seed. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer that my kids went to a 512 school and they shared the cafeteria and then it was just completely separate lunch periods and it, it worked okay. And my, the, the question that just popped in my head is, for the admin, are our middle and high schoolers on identical bell schedules right now? And do they have to be? And I'm wondering if a solution, like if you're worried about in the, traffic in the halls, if, if you offset the middle and high school bells by five minutes, that could solve that problem right there.
I guess that would really depend on how much of the overlap you share, right? If you overlap in gym, that difference could be a huge offset of a problem between a high school gym class coming in first period and a middle school class coming in second period. And it depends on how much flexibility you have in your building at that point.
It also impacts shared staff.
Right.
We have, we have teachers who teach in both buildings.
I see. Okay.
What would you predict is this, is this a safe timeline for adjusting and debating a new proposition before increased material and construction costs impact moving forward with an amended proposition?
I stole yours. You want to steal mine? Okay. Sorry. So, it really depends on what you guys decide to do going forward. So, we escalated for the $70 million project through, I want to say 28. So, you know, planning that construction completing by that time. If you land in that same window, it probably won't affect you very much. If you push past that window, it, you would escalate for each year you push past that. If we delay the start, you're again, we've kind of planned for things happening in that amount of time, I think you would still be okay. It really depends on what the total timeframe looks like. If we go from four years down to two, you may technically save some money depending on your perspective of how this process works. But the harder part of that is, is not knowing what is actually the thing that we're doing. Does that make sense? So, like I said, with the elementary school in Bennett, a lot of those things have to happen sort of in a sequence because the wall has, had to go in to retain the grade, then the addition, and then sort of all the other stuff after that. So, that could have a huge effect on how that works too.
So, I understand that idea of ganging stuff up and that everything changes, so, you know, if you do it closer to the window. But I, I'm curious also, because you do this all the time, like, what would be, what is a good timeline? Like, because we also just need it to pass and for the community to feel whole about it and, you know, so what's realistic even, you know, because obviously people aren't making completely just decisions based on numbers, right? There's a lot of human emotion. So, like on your experience, like, what does that normally look like? What have you seen before? What could we expect?
So, if your question is, when is the right time to vote again?
Just the time, I think what was the question, a safe timeline for adjusting and debating a new proposition is, did that mean vote? I don't know. I didn't read the question.
That's okay. Yeah, that's why we're here. You can ask as many questions as you want.
Yeah, like, yeah, I would assume a new vote. Yeah. I would, a new proposition before the public.
Yeah, I mean, we talked a little bit about that when we sort of prepped for this. You know, I've had success with December votes. I don't typically see a lot of success after the holiday. Most people have sort of spread all their good cheer by the holiday and then they're recovering from that from January until whenever. Fall typically works okay. I think for what you guys want to do, I think this coming fall, probably too soon. December depends on what you were talking about. Is this 5 million, 10 million, 20 million? You know what I mean? It depends on what it's actually comprised of. And then it depends on the process with the public. I will compliment you guys again because I've done this before, but you guys did one of the most comprehensive public engagement processes I have ever been a part of in a public vote. You know what I mean? You guys did a really good job getting information out there and being present and answering questions and having people be where they needed to be, just unfortunately didn't pass. It just hap, it happens unfortunately. But if you want to go through that same process, I don't think you're going to do that safely in five months. And then there's the 45-day window of, the vote is December 12th, it's got to be 45 days before that when you guys put the proposition forward. Did that answer your question? Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, it did, it did. You said December would be the best time, right?
Yeah. I would do before December or after December. And I would do, and when I say that, I mean, I would do before December or May.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Right. And, yeah, I think I was just.
Personal opinion.
I was just asking about, we did do everything we could, and yet we still have this thing that we've got to get through. So, I'm trying to like figure out what a realistic timeline looks like, what a timeline that, we'd all love it to be aggressive, right? We'd all love it to be this fall, but like, is that realistic?
I think it depends on the total. If you're going to do another 60 million, I think that might be hard for people to wrap around in that timeframe, especially with, I assume, a lot of people vacation in the summer. Most of that time of discussions publicly would happen at that point because if you did a September or October vote, you're really talking about a proposition through your board in August or September, that gets a little complicated.
Some of the feedback we got was about the, the, how realistic the timeline was. Some folks were quite worried, just given external factors that are out of Some folks were quite worried, just given external factors that are out of our control. And I'm wondering if you could help us lay that out? Because from, my first impression from when we met was that we were actually padding the timeline. We actually have more time than we needed if this were to have passed this, in, in this past May. I think this question touches on it a little bit, but I think it would be really helpful if everybody could hear from you what the implementation looks like between a vote, and let's assume it's a yes vote, to a completion. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
So again, asterisks, a $5 million project, totally different timeline than 70. Where it gets hard is sometimes a $20 million project can take the same amount of time as a $70 million project, if that makes any sense at all. Depends on what the pieces of that project are. For you guys, I think we had a very comfortable timeline with what you had planned for voting in May, giving CPL time to actually do their design work safely and correctly before we vote. So when we talk about voting days in May, that's like the worst time for them to vote because it really only gives them four to five-ish months to do whatever we want to try to do first, to design and get through SED to get your building permit. So right now, SED is like one or two weeks for review, for architectural mechanical review. At the time of the vote or before that, it was seven months. So that's the other sort of hard thing to gauge through here. If that stays at one or two weeks, they could really work till November. Let it get reviewed through the holiday and then we could bid in late January, February. That's, you know, ideal. But a lot of times we're working through what SED's current timeline is. So that's the first part. After that, if we hit a January timeframe, it's a lot easier to get things from April to June than it is if we're bidding in March or April, getting things from June to July to August. So that's the other part where if you have neighboring districts that have those struggles, it's not because nobody did what they were supposed to do. It's because maybe SED was seven months and you can't bid until you get approval, which is April or May, and you're sort of pushing yourself through that process. We had a pretty good idea of what we wanted to do right away so that we could show work being done that first summer, roofs, that retaining wall, things that are mostly easy to get, had to happen first anyway. And then that gave us time for the additions to sort of follow that. The hard part with Bennett was, once the additions were done, we still have the gym and the kitchen and the cafeteria. Those would have been the most complicated pieces depending on if the kitchen physically had to change its orientation. So serving line was in one spot, kitchen in another. We gave ourselves the most amount of time we could to work through, how does a kitchen function when it can't be done in July and August? Kitchens typically take six to seven months when you're making that drastic of a change. How does that really work in that timeline? And that's sort of what gave us that extra look of time. That's why we pushed everything out a little bit. So whatever we choose to do, we'll go through that same process. We're going to give ourselves a safe amount of time because nobody wants me to stand here in August and go, hey, we need 12 more months because windows took 25 weeks and not eight. That might happen anyway, but it depends on where we start from.
So knowing that, you're suggesting that the board consider a new proposition for vote, you said either in the fall or May of next year? And we'd still be on a somewhat of a, of the same timeline, implementation timeline, but no later than May?
Right, depending on what's in that. So if you push it another year and it's 60 million, we'll probably have to gain a year of escalation for 28 or 29 at that point. If it's five million between, you're going to vote for, you could probably do that sooner, depending on what it is, we could probably do that fairly quickly. It just depends on what the actual work is.
Thank you.
Trustee Goodrich, do you want to read those next couple of questions? I think you wrote those.
And you may have already answered this, but instead of 10 additional classrooms for Bennett, how much does building only six classrooms there save us? And Sarah wanted to know, what is the answer to this question? If the six classrooms are specifically designed for K through one with the bathrooms here?
So I did do a quick look at that when I saw this question. I think the nice thing, the way CPL had structured that addition, most of those classrooms that had bathrooms were sort of to the lower front side of that. And there were four classrooms to the back that I pretty much was able to just take that square footage off. And I don't know how much of you remember the actual layout, but there was a connector hallway that connected that back wing to basically the front of the building. I kept that as well, so you would still have that connection. So really it was just deleting those four classrooms, keeping the outside bathrooms. The main office stayed, the art room was still there. So we saved about 3,000 square feet, which was our 3,200 square feet, which is about 1.3 million conservatively. I did that just based on the square footage. So, I mean, it's a decent change, but there's a asterisk to that in that now that that's smaller, maybe the boiler room can be smaller, which will still save us more. Because we had increased the boiler room size to take on what was 15,000 square feet or 17,000 square feet at that point. Maybe we don't need all of that boiler room to do that. That could be more savings at that point.
Sorry, but as I understood from earlier, if we got rid of four classrooms, the building aid would go down somewhat, right? So how much of that one point, whatever, would be offset by lost building aid?
So, you want, I'll let you go. You want to go first or you want me to do my spiel of?
It depends. So you would still get full aid on the classrooms you are building. You just aren't getting aid on the ones you aren't building, but you're not building them, so you don't have that cost anymore. So you don't need the aid to fund that construction cost essentially.
I keep going here. Okay. Following question, assuming we have two propositions where the goal is still to eventually implement the original full proposition two that failed. Let's say we had a proposition one A that contains all or most of the elementary work and another proposition two A that contains all or most of the secondary, middle school, high school, and the campus site work. Would it be possible to move the Bennett window replacement? 3,674,000 to proposition two A, assuming proposition one A will eventually be implemented in the future?
Yeah, you could, you could do that. You can move the windows in middle school, high school, as long as it's packaged together with that work at like, when it goes out to bid. If you were to do two separate projects and, correct me if I'm wrong CJ, that's where more cost would come in because you'd be bidding it out twice. As long as you tie it in to the work that's going on at the middle school, high school, you could put in replacing the windows at Bennett. And where those windows are located that need replacement aren't in areas where the addition's really going. So it's not like you'd be doing work that would then be ripped out later because the addition is to the left side where none of those windows really are.
Thank you. Yeah, that answers that, so that's good. If only proposition two A passes without one A, would, what would be the increased cost if one A were implemented at a later time? I mean.
Depends on how later the later time is.
Yeah, so that's all depends with inflation.
Yeah, depends. So escalation varies every year. You know, for right now, even with tariffs and stuff, we're looking at three to 5%. Some years it's four to seven. You know what I mean? It really depends on what's happening in the world at the time. So even that could change between now and 2020, seven, you know? But we track that as we go and we keep our pulse on that with elections and all that fun stuff. So if we were to revamp this whole piece of everything, we would recalculate what we're looking at. So we'd have to be able to actually tell you.
So it wouldn't be cheaper?
It's, nothing will ever be cheaper the longer you wait. No prices have ever gone down in my entire time doing this, so, yes.
So if one A fails, what is the cost of building a security vestibule at Bennett, which would probably need to be replaced and moved in the future? So we talked about that already, so I think I have the answer to that. Other considerations we need to be aware of when proposing two propositions. Legally, I believe proposition one has to pass for proposition two to pass, correct? That was Sarah. So I'm sorry, that's Sarah's question.
No, it's, it's just good for us to discuss, but there was, there's different strategies to having multiple propositions. So if we had one, two, three, four even, what I understand from your response is that they, we can structure it, that they can be independent. It's not that we have to pass prop one in order to realize prop two or for prop two to realize prop three. So that was just a helpful distinction for me because we had that conversation a while ago, but then we ended up putting everything in one huge proposition. And so I just wanted to better understand what our options are as a board as we think about trying to under, obviously meet the needs and the necessary updates, but also help our community understand that we recognize there, you know, there are different interests here. So thank you for helping us sort that out.
So is there any reason from an architectural point of view, why prop one A, Bennett Elementary, and two A be dependent on the others to pass from an architectural point of view?
They don't have to be. It really comes down to how the district wants to put the propositions forward. I don't think what you are proposing to do in one A verse two B is dependent on each other. They could be separate and done at separate times.
I mean, I, I know you don't have the dirt guy here, but I was thinking there might be an issue with, you know, something with the drainage or whatever. Is there anything there?
No, I think that was the elementary school side of the addition, which was incorporated in that cost. I think the only other thing that was between the two buildings was electrical going up through, which was the new electrical service that would have been, sorry, I keep doing that, needed with Bennett when we do the additions between the gym and the classrooms.
Let's just take a second. I, I see the superintendent has her mic in her hand and, and so does trustee Knutson.
I just wanted to mention the one, the one thing that we had talked about when we talked about whether to have one proposition or two was the, the budget and being able to share fiscal resources across the different scope. So that if one bid came in higher than we had thought and one came in lower, as long as it was one bucket of money, we could still move forward with it. Whereas if it's two separate propositions, it's bid separately.
Yes, tracked separately.
And tracked separately and all the funding is separate. So if there are the same contractors for both propositions, it's still two separate bids.
Yes, yes.
So we lose that efficiency of scale as well.
You would, yeah, correct. And then the complication of understanding multiple propositions at that point.
And I was just going to say, I mean, it's not an architectural question, but it's, it's also a question of district priorities and fiscal planning is the other reason to do that. So, but that's not really an architectural question.
Getting back to superintendent's point there. So let's say you have, you have two separate bonds and so the work has to go out as a separate bid. Can't be conjoined in any way.
Not typically because it's harder to track the financials at that point. It's not impossible, but you would be in a situation where when you, if proposition one is bid with proposition two, let's just say we did it, you had two separate votes, they ran mostly concurrent, CPL could get all of that design work done at one time. Let's say it's $20 million, 10 and 10. If proposition one finishes seven months sooner, let's say 12 months sooner than proposition two, you'd have really no way to close out one, which would delay your aid coming for that proposition because you're still working on two and they're combined. Because they're still tracking through that, that bidder has not closed out. So when you go through your audit, when Monica does her piece of that, they're going to go, well, you just handed me a pay app that shows all this work done, but there's all this other stuff here, this contract's still open. There's nothing that says that more work can't be added. They're probably not going to let you close that out because they're combined. Does that make sense at all? It gets very, very into the weeds of my process at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my question is, so if you had two propositions, is it better to have two contractors? Or would it be better to have one contractor that's doing work on both propositions?
So I guess the question is, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding this, so I'm going to ask you guys a question. When you say two propositions, you mean still voted on the same day? But if prop one passes, you would just do prop one? If prop two passes, you would just do prop two? If both passed, you would do both? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't matter. Sorry, I totally misunderstood that question then. If you on May 10th vote for two propositions and they're not conjoined in order, as you had asked, they don't have to be, and you were to pass both, okay? We could bid pieces of that as long as they were still prop one pieces. Actually, it wouldn't matter, I don't think. One second. Because it's still one vote, it's still one total of work, the propositions. It's still one vote, yeah. So if prop one is 10 million and prop two is 10 million, your total when you, we would submit to SED would be 20. You would just show the proof of the different propositions, it, it wouldn't matter. You could actually, we could do it the same way we do every other project. Sorry, I've definitely confused this process. I apologize.
So the contractors really wouldn't matter?
It would be up to you guys at that point. Once you, regardless of the propositions, if they're voted on the same day, you'd have one vote with a total. I don't think your propositions matter at that point. We could have fiscal advisors confirm my thinking, but I don't know that it would matter. If you voted prop one on May 10th and prop two on May 20th, that would be two separate pieces.
Before we voted before.
Okay.
You had said if we have two separate propositions, the money can't cross.
If, yeah, but separate, separate, not voted on the same day separate.
That's not what we.
Then, again, we should talk with fiscal then.
Okay.
Maybe I, yeah. Because I don't think it would matter. I really don't. Yeah, I may have been very wrong then.
I think it has to deal with the date of the authorization of the project. Like if the project is broken up into different props, but they all were approved on the same date, voted on the same date, they all got approved and you want to package one project that gets submitted to SED, you're going to show that backup of, you know, your voters and you're going to give them the date of authorization of that project and all your funding, where it's coming from. And then I think it's fine, from what I've experienced the past couple of years, I don't think it.
I don't think it would have mattered.
Yeah.
We should.
But we can talk with fiscal, with you guys.
I will 100% own my mistake. I just, I don't, I don't know that it would.
Does that also mean that we could use the same contractor then across multiple propositions?
You'd have to, it depends on how you bid. So if you bid them together as one project, which, again, you don't bid 70 million at once.
Right, but say like just for plumbing, for example, or just, you know, could you bid plumbing for the middle school, high school and elementary building projects, even if they were split across four propositions?
Yeah.
You could.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that matters. Again, we should double check at this point. Now I'm even less confident than I was before and I'm usually very confident about things.
I guess I have some quick questions here. Would eliminating the student common areas actually save that 1.5 million?
Yeah, if we remove the whole thing. Right, if we remove the line, it would depend on if there's any infrastructure pieces of that, which I don't think there were for the student commons. which I don't think there were for the student commons.
So, so why was the upgrade to the east end parking lot, middle school, high school, 2.2 million, it seems pretty high, I don't know. Explain that one.
That includes the demolition of the bus garage and any remediation that may be required from that?
The remediation is probably the biggest concern there.
Mm-hmm, potentially.
Where the work currently being performed in the bus garage, I don't know, maybe this is a question for our superintendent. If the bus garage goes away, where does that work go? I mean, I see buses up on the lift today, and, you know, where are they gonna do that work?
We would have to lease space with someone locally.
Now we got the open-ended question here for Clark, me, Sarah, and Rick and Megan. Do the architects have a list of other ideas to bring the cost down?
So essentially, it comes down to value engineering when we start designing the project. You could select lesser, not quality, but different finishes potentially. So sometimes, you know, you just go with VCT instead of LVT, things like that. So it has to do with value engineering as we're designing. We can build in alternates and things like that to help, you know, track the cost and make sure we're not going over budget with the project. But the overall scope you have now, like CJ mentioned earlier, a lot of things kind of, you know, are a trickling effect. Like, this has to happen in order for the addition to happen. So in order for the addition to go on Bennett, you have to move your playground. And then because of that, you're losing parking. So there's, some of the scope isn't as easily to just say we can take it off, because a lot of it relies on something else happening. There, some of the work in the middle school, high school, maybe, the full main office suite renovation, could that possibly come out? If it's that, it's not as much of a need to save some costs, potentially, but that's not one of your larger cost items in the project. So, we can look at things, there are some ideas. It just depends on how much you really want to pull out and how that will affect your overall design and what you really wanted for the district.
Yeah, so I think, you know, because you're our advisors, and as the people who are like, working with us to achieve our vision, I think that that's such a great question, right? So, if you had to, like, from what you were saying, it might be just materials, right? That's what you would choose, that's where you would choose to shave. But yeah, I think as we continue this conversation, or, you know, we'd like, we'd love to hear from you, like, maybe this piece we see is connected to a lot of other pieces. This is the end of that string, you know, maybe that goes, or something. Because, you know, you're gonna probably have a much better idea of what those things look like than we do.
Just so I understand to clarify, let's say we were to look at, I'm sorry, what was the term, value?
Value engineering.
Value engineering. But we wanted everything exactly what, you know, the first proposition said. This is hypothetical, of course. Are you suggesting then that we could reduce the cost by up to $7 million just by looking at different types of materials? If the prop was 70 million and we're thinking about like a 10% reduction? Is that accurate?
I mean, it depends on how far you go with those items, and it depends on, oh, sorry, sorry. Depends on how far you go with those items, and it depends on those items themselves. So, example, the cafeteria at Bennett, you know, that had a finish plan and a finish area, it had a courtyard on the outside. If we pull that courtyard completely out, if we don't remove the floor and put in a new floor, we just keep the gym floor, but maybe remove the gym striping, those are all, you know, we're reusing a lot of things that are already there. You know, and just doing acoustical treatments instead of, you know, redesigning a space, maybe not putting a ceiling in and dealing with it acoustically. There's different options that find ways to save money, but they affect how that space looks when you walk into it. So that's a big piece of whether that's, which part is important.
Thank you for those specifics, that's really helpful. Sure. There seems to be some immediate needs, like the new track and the windows at the elementary school, that need to be addressed regardless. Can you, for safety and because they're past their, you know, their usable life, can you itemize the current list with what else needs to be done most urgently? And then looking at that list, are there any recommendations about how to leverage efficiencies across those items? Or are they just too disparate?
So this is, that's something we could definitely do. We can look at your building condition survey now, and I believe another one's to come up maybe in a year, you do again? In 2026, I think you said? So we could look at the one you have now and determine what is left. We did look at that briefly with your facilities director, Kyle. So we do have that list, we just would need some time to generate that for you and to really show what's been included in the prop and what's left and what hasn't been included. I think when we looked at it early on, there didn't seem to be a ton at Bennett in the middle school, high school that wasn't being addressed. Again, like the Bennett windows, we were looking into that. Some of the areas of concern, there's some roofing restoration, some things like that, upgrades to fire alarm systems, I think was a lot of the bigger things on the list. But we can come up with that itemized list for you guys, we just need a little bit more time to do so.
And there'd be maybe adds to that list once you do the new survey.
Rick and I were wondering, could we eliminate the new administrative office suite in the high school and repurpose rooms more economically for the private meeting spaces that are needed?
Yeah, we could. That area, we have to consider abatement. There's a lot of hazardous material in that area, in the ceilings. But potentially, yeah, you could just do a part of it and not do the full admin suite renovation. You can just decide to take some of the spaces, repurpose them. It could be done even with furniture sometimes. You can outfit a space just with furniture to make it for a different use without doing a full extensive renovation.
With each building, is it possible to be able to separate out the necessary upgrades identified by the BCS reports from wish list upgrades and improvements so that we can see how much of the proposed budgets of each building are absolutely necessary and which are not? I feel like you kind of answered that.
Yeah, we can do that, that's similar to the previous question. But yes, that's something we could do, we just need a little bit more time to present that to you guys.
So, people are sitting in our quite nice seats in our auditorium here. And so this created some confusion in the community about, there's like, I think, a million dollars in the proposition for the auditorium, and I was just wondering what critical functions were addressed in that million dollar upgrade for this auditorium? Can some of those improvements be delayed without unduly hurting the arts programs? Were some of them aesthetic versus functional?
So the auditorium upgrades were mostly aesthetical in the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the plan for sequencing the actual construction? We just talked about this a bit, but if needed, could we finish the elementary school first and close Woodstock sooner in order to realize more savings sooner?
If the additions were the way they were pre-vote, what we had planned for before, we could manipulate the schedule to do some of that. But again, there's four things that happen that have to happen with that addition for the totality of that building to work. Can't start that addition until we build the retaining wall and the fire access road around that. That was planned to happen first. We could then start the addition, which means we have to move the playground right away. And then you lose your parking lot up top, and then we have to build your parking lot. So, all those things have to sort of happen in a carefully stepped process. That we could make that happen faster, but it would also, I think, be at a slower pace at the high school. Do you know what I mean? We may be slowing the pace down at the high school to do that. So it can divert manpower to do that. So you'd have to take that into account, too.
If Woodstock stays open longer than anticipated, which improvements, upgrades from BCS reports or otherwise, would the architects recommend to ensure up to, you know, five, we'll say, years of safety there for our students?
So based on the BCS for Woodstock, we didn't look at that in fully, but the larger things that were left on that were the restrooms being very old and probably original to the building. Some roofing areas were indicated to possibly need restoration. And then I think the other thing, I think those were the two things really at Woodstock that stood out on the BCS at a quick look. But we could do a further look into that and see what else potentially would need to be done there to keep that building running.
Okay, so, one of the scenarios that we're thinking could happen in the future is a drastic cut in funding from the state and needing to, on short notice, bring our elementary students to the central campus. So, what I was curious about is safety, basically. What are the absolutely critical elements of the proposition we just did to safely be able to bring 420 elementary school kids every day there? And I'd love to have those kind of labeled, like, in my mind, the new drop-off lane for Bennett is sort of, because of the increased traffic, we would need to read, we just absolutely need to redo the bus configuration, in my mind, but I want to make sure that's true. And at least some new classrooms and some degree of gym. This is part, I'll get to that in my next question. But others are gray area, you know, like bus garage, you know, and some are clearly not necessarily like the field lights and the food truck hookup. So, I'm just wondering if you could identify things in the prop we just did that are absolutely critical to be able to centralize our elementary if we need to on short notice?
We could do that, I don't have that list right now off the top of my head, but we could definitely put that together. And I think, you mentioned the bus garage. Part of that was to create a site for flow of traffic in that lot with the new security vestibule addition that's gonna be constructed this summer. So, it might still be viewed maybe as not as needed, but the intent for that work was to really make the flow at that side of the building safer and better as well for student drop-off on that side of the building. So with the extra students coming into Bennett, we wanted to kind of get middle school, high school drop-off predominantly on the one side of the building, so they were kind of separate, so the flow would be better, and you want to be backed up onto 28 as much.
Great, that's what I'm, that's the kind of thing I'm asking about. My thoughts are, you know, we're just for reference, not because I was suggesting anything. All right, and my screen just went a bit, but I think I remember my last question, so.
And just as a board, thank you for bringing, so you, I heard, we want to prioritize safety, right? And, yeah, naturally. But I would imagine that as a board, it'd be really helpful as we're looking to like, figure out what a Plan B could be like, that we decided what our priorities were. Is it, you know, where does the auditorium come in the list? Where does safety come in? Like, if we can help list our priorities, and we can tell you those, and then you're not just like, going, "Well, we could like, not paint the walls," or something like that. We could be a little bit more strategic about it. So I think that's, as a board, I think that we should really try to talk about, like, what are musts for these improvements? So thank you, Rick.
And this is sort of related, just because I know, I was fond of this element, but I'm just wondering cost-wise, the, we need new gym spa, if we were to have all our elementary students at Bennett, we'd need new gym space. And we had planned this sort of double, basically what I believe was a double elementary gym with a divider that could be, become sort of a full-size gym. Was the, would half of that gym be enough to service, combined with what we have already at Bennett? Would that be enough to service 420, 430 students? If not, and would having that gym to just an elementary-sized gym and not having the community aspect, not having the, you know, available to the high school kids element, you know, would that save the lot a little? I'm just curious about the economies, potential economies there.
Depending on how far you go would dictate the savings. So, if we were to halve it, does that mean we get rid of all the bleachers, too? Because you really would have no need for spectators? That would save you the most. Flooring would be a big chunk of that. But the actual infrastructure of the building itself, you're still gonna need all four walls, you're still gonna need the floor. It's just really the savings of those specific things. It's not like the classroom piece where we're taking four classrooms, oh, that's a pretty substantial change to look at it square foot-wise. You're really looking at pieces of that, so I don't think it would be as significant as it sounds like it would be.
Sounds like certainly less than half. Way less than half. Okay, thank you.
This is an additional question, apologies, but it just helped remind me, Rick. Recently, we hosted a music concert for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grades here in this room, and it was standing room only, we didn't have enough space. And I'm just curious, because this obviously is much bigger than what we would even have envisioned at the elementary school. In that, so what you're suggesting is more about like, what is, you know, from a safety perspective, square footage per number of children, not necessarily what is ideal for a K through 5 performance, or an event, or a, what, you know, fill in the blank. Because it feels to me like if we did less than half of that size, we would be in real trouble to bring the community together for a K through 5 event.
Would you do the auditorium-type things in the new gym or in the old cafeteria? Because the old cafeteria is where the stage would have been, that's why I ask.
Yeah, I think in our, in the plan, the old caf, the old gym, because the stage is there, would still be, you know, used as an auditorium space.
Right, so I guess-
Can you ask your question again now, sorry? Sorry.
It's okay. And I may have confused it, because you were asking about the gym. But the point was about, if we had, we want to be prepared, right, for 450 kids, call it, right, in that elementary space, in the elementary building? Could we reduce the size of those shared spaces, the auditorium and the gym, safely and effectively? Or would it just be like, less ideal for those community types of events that we hope to have there?
The cafeteria, cafetorium, the future cafetorium, size wouldn't change in this process, because we'd be demolishing an existing piece of the building. So, I don't know if that would fit 400 and whatever kids we thought it was. I don't know if that was ever part of that thought process, it was just what the space was.
We can look into how many seats could comfortably fit in that space set up with the stage. It probably wouldn't be the 480 if I'm just remembering the square footage and the way that lays out. But if your intention is to use that gym addition for, not community, but for school events that would have the whole 480 students, then that could be a reason you'd want to keep it large. But when it comes to what's required by code and SED, it's based off the number of people in the building and a square foot factor. So, could the gym be reduced in half? Probably, and it would still meet the needs based on building code. But for the way you want to use it for those specialty occasions of events, it might not work for you anymore, but.
So, first Caroline, then Rick.
I was just, again, gonna point out to the board, when we are talking about making changes, shaving, that things like our auditoriums or our play spaces, according to the conversations that we had earlier today, that human connection, that focus, I think this is a time when we, we'll talk about safety, of course, but then I think about these- time when we, we'll talk about safety, of course, but then I think about these values that we have and the vision of the future. And as we have to shave, like, maybe we don't shave there, maybe we shave someplace else that would be less predictable, maybe, you know what I mean? Because those are such huge values and we are offering these children gather, in our communities, gathering spaces, which are so important in this radically digital world. So those are the conversations I would love to have, so we can give you guidance, so we can say like, you know, the auditoriums are really important to Caroline. No, it would be like a whole thing, but, you know, like, or we have to have safety first, and then you have some sort of ideas about where our priorities are. I think that could be really helpful for being smart about the design.
Are there any more questions? That kind of bubbled up while we were talking?
I just wanted to say out loud, the next board meeting is July 1st.
I'll take it, we'll be here.
Are we good? Thank you both so much. Really, very, very hopeful.
I'd like to make a motion to just switch the agenda up a little bit so that we can have Olivia give her report before we go into executive session, and so she's not sitting here for all that time. May I have a second? Trustee Jerome, I was just going to call you trustee Caroline. All in favor? Great, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Good evening. Yesterday was the high school's last day of classes. For the next following weeks, our high school students will continue to take regents and final exams. While the middle school's last day of classes will be June 20th, and the eighth grade moving up ceremony will be June 23rd. This evening, the final issue of the Talon newspaper of this year has been brought out. Additionally, spring sports have officially concluded. Congratulations to the four athletes, Alexandra Young, Sarah Maitawi, Sadie Condes, and Alexa Hall, who all competed at the state level. The final senior events have concluded, as well as the senior picnic and the senior scholarship award ceremony. Graduation will be June 26th, and the Bel Air Bash will be held that evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Olivia.
May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss antean negotiations, the employment of a particular person, and to meet with legal counsel. Trustee Ramondo, may I have a second? Trustee Goodrich? Any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. We should be back in about 45 minutes.
We are back. May I have a motion to exit executive session and return to public session? We are back. May I have a motion to exit executive session and return to public session? Trustee Ramondo, second trustee Lynch. Any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 6.01 is acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the June 3, 2025 meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second trustee Mitchell Morell. Any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Onto our superintendent's district report.
I'm going to apologize ahead of time. This is lengthy. So we had a conversation with Dr. Bachman regarding the status of our long-term plan, the results of our capital project vote, and the thought that we may need to bring additional information into our conversation. We discussed that the report that he had created previously is not entirely relevant at this time, and the possibility that he could work on a new report that would include relevant scenarios and provide an instructional focus. So he was amenable to that conversation, and he will be working on a proposal that he will have to us by our next meeting for the board to consider. We have posted the exit poll analysis on the optimizing Ontario page, so it is right at the top of the page, very easily found and accessible for anyone who would like to review that. Last week was our annual scholarship awards night. The generosity of this community is truly immense, and we are so grateful. So many of our seniors are leaving here with substantial support and with recognition for all of their achievements. The number of awards and the diversity of the awards are both incredibly impressive. Many of the awards celebrate academic achievement, but students are also recognized for being leaders in sports, in the arts, for being kind, for being supportive of their peers, for having an interest in the outdoors and nature, for love of animals, and for so much more. It's truly amazing to sit in that awards night and see all of the recognition that our students get and all the generosity of our community. We had our soft launch for our fall reading group, in which we will read The Anxious Generation. We currently have seven individuals signed up, but we know that this is a busy time of year, so people are not really thinking about what they're going to be doing in September. We will be posting this on social media shortly, and we will remind everyone again at the end of the summer when thoughts will turn to the return of school in September. In the meantime, anyone who would like to participate can sign up on the form that is posted, or can just reach out to my office directly, and we can get you a copy of the book. Last week, we met with Mr. Mentah. He is a district resident who has recently been appointed as one of the deputy county executives. He has been in conversation with members of the Town of Shandaken Board regarding the possibility of the town creating federally subsidized affordable housing on the Phoenisha campus. The members of the town board that he had communicated with indicated a strong interest in this path, but a lack of capacity to manage the process. So he said that he is willing to assist the town on behalf of the county executive. So he did let us know that if the district were interested in this as a potential solution for the Phoenisha campus, he would work with the town. The process would involve him contacting developers, arranging for access to the building so that he could show the property, and the developers could begin to ideate possibilities for how they would want to develop the property. He would then assist in creating an RFP process that would result in the town actually selecting a developer to work with. At that point, we would then ask the voters to approve selling the property to the town for a dollar. He anticipates that if everything goes smoothly, that could be on our ballot in May of 2026 if everything worked out on his end and the board was supportive of that. We have a lot of construction happening here in the middle high school this summer. Once again, we're going to be renovating classrooms, so we have 13 classrooms and two additional spaces that will be renovated. The middle school gym is going to be renovated. The new security vestibule will be created. The new outdoor student lunch pavilion, which will replace the tents that are out there now, is going to happen this summer. The west end site improvements, including a new drop-off lane for the entrance by the tennis courts, is going to be done. The new tennis court parking lot paving and lighting will be done. We will also be replacing the library ADA lift, creating more drainage around the tennis courts, and upgrading the electrical panels in the math and science wing. So because of all of that, the majority of this building is going to be inaccessible until mid-August, except for the guidance hall and the main hall will both remain open, but will only be accessible from the front of the building where the buses actually line up. So visitors will need to park in that bus lane and enter through that front entrance. Also, we have posted a notice on the tennis courts, because we do have a lot of community members who typically use our tennis courts when we are not using them. Unfortunately, they will not be accessible either because of all the construction happening at that parking lot and around them. We anticipate that they will reopen in mid-August. A reminder that we will be closed on Thursday in observance of Juneteenth, and Friday is the last day of classes for our middle school students. Next week, on Thursday and Friday, elementary students will have half-days, and graduation is on Thursday, so we hope to see all the faculty, staff, family, and community members join us to witness this milestone for our senior class. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about the New York State budget. So the New York State budget obviously passed, and there are certain provisions that are impactful for Ontario. So in terms of foundation aid, we did receive a little over $156,000 increase over what we had received last year. So this was the minimum 2% increase provided to all districts in the hold harmless situation. We also received an increase in three expense-driven aid categories, but a decrease in three others, but we did have a net increase in our entire state aid package of $300,000. So that was very positive for us. We continue to be able to access free breakfast and lunch for all students, because the governor included universal free school meals. The state budget increased the BOSI's adable salary cap, so this will increase the amount of aid that we are able to receive based on staff salaries of BOSI's employees who work within COSERS that we subscribe to. So employees of BOSI's who are providing services that we access, we can get aid based on their salaries. So the cap is increasing by $10,000 each year for three years. So for us, our BOSI's aid ratio is approximately 30%. The amount of an individual employee's salary that is adable is $30,000. So we would get aid of $10,000 in that situation, and that will see a modest increase for the next three years. There has been an extension of the waiver for the retiree earnings cap for the next two school years, which allow retirees to work in the public sector and earn more than $35,000 in a calendar year. We currently have more than one retiree working in the district, and we're very grateful that this has been extended as it allows for flexibility. Although I do keep reminding myself, if the cap were not waived or extended, there is actually a process to apply to the state for a waiver on a case-by-case basis, which we have done numerous times in the past. The state budget included some changes for the zero emissions bus mandates. Districts are now able to apply for waivers for compliance with this mandate, and it also allows the commissioner to consider other factors outside the control of the district, as well as including things like the availability of vehicles, lack of infrastructure, and funding. There's also now a requirement that bus dealers provide independent third-party battery range estimate that includes an estimate on different terrains, different weather conditions, as well as the impact of what the storage situation is for the vehicles. So this will be especially beneficial for us, as our initial assessment identified a number of bus runs that would not be viable for a zero emissions vehicle, and even more runs that would not be viable for situations where we may, in the winter, have to bring students in and then turn around and dismiss early. There wouldn't be enough time for a complete charge. So there are going to be some different circumstances considered now. The smart device ban that's in the state budget is not particularly impactful for us, since we already have device-free during the school day situation, but we'll see how that rolls out. I did find it interesting, the enacted budget includes $1 million for the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services to create and distribute an educator's toolkit for providing students of various ages with the skills necessary for critically consuming media. I didn't see any additional information or details on that, but I'm very interested to see what they develop and disseminate for us. And lastly, there was $24 million included in the state budget for bullet aid. So Assembly member Schresser reached out to us and invited us to apply for her bullet aid, and we were able to do that, and she has put our application forward to the assembly to be considered this year. So we were told we could apply for up to $25,000. We submitted an application that included professional development and student workbooks supporting our math curriculum. Unfortunately, the turnaround time that they gave us was literally about a day, so we didn't have much time to get more creative than that, but we felt like we were given the opportunity to apply for grant funding, so we did.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, great, thank you. Board district news. Trustee Jerome?
I know I always sound like a cheerleader, but you know how you all understand how mission-critical this, the music and arts for me and this human connection piece is. So, when our middle school jazz band won gold medals with distinction at NISMIA, which is extraordinary. I mean, this is a real achievement, and seeing those children like throw their arms around each other and hoist their medal high, and the teachers embracing one another, and it was just absolutely incredible. And then they followed that up with a performance at Maverick, which is this incredibly special place that, again, just speaks to the creative talent in this place that we live in, and they were able to perform there, and they just sound so incredible, and I'm so excited to hear what they'll do next. And so I'm glowing, but I also think this is a great achievement for the educational offering that we provide here at Ontario. This is not frosting. This is like mission-critical stuff. So go Ontario, really proud of us.
And is it not also correct, trustee Jerome, that the band also won gold with distinction?
Yeah.
So yeah, yeah, there were two. And it really is, somebody said, you know, it's kind of like, in musical terms, this is like the football team winning the state championships or something. This is like, and to get two of those from a small rural district like ours, it really is a testament to our teachers and our kids and our families who support them. And so that's really wonderful. I also wanted to just say that I went, I had the pleasure of attending last Thursday the year-end celebration for the mentorship program in the high school, which was really wonderful. And I took some notes just because, so there were a bunch of student mentors who just talked about their mentors and their mentorship experience. And it's a really wonderful program that I think people should know about, because they sometimes, they don't get, kids sign up late, or you know, almost to a person, all the kids said, I wish I'd signed up earlier. So I'm trying, you know, to promote awareness. So this year's cohort did mentorships in screenwriting, auto repair. Three kids did elementary education, and I think all three of them said it really solidified their desire to pursue elementary education as a career after high school and college, which is wonderful. Photography, comic book writing, painting. Two were in political science and law and did internships with the district attorney in Kingston. One did philosophy with a college professor, and then another one did Mandarin. And so what I learned is that these mentorships are really student-driven. It's really driven by student interest, and Mr. Epstein, who directs the program, he takes it upon himself, if a kid expresses a desire or an interest in a particular field and wants to do a mentorship in that area, he then goes out and tries to find somebody in our community. And there are plenty of people in our community who will support our kids this way. So if you're listening, and you know, you're a parent, you know, and you think your kid might benefit, maybe talk it up to them a little bit and get them to start thinking about an area that they would want to be mentored by a professional or a community member, because there's lots of depth of experience and knowledge in our community to be mined. But it does take some initiative on the part of the student and the family to get them signed up. And this is primarily for high school students, obviously. So, but it was a really great night.
I just want to add that I also attended that, and it was really, I was very, very impressed. And I just want to send kudos to David Nelson Epstein, because this was his first year taking on the role of the mentorship leadership, and following in the footsteps of someone who had been doing it for over 20 years. So I think he did a remarkable job, and you could see the camaraderie between him and the students, you know, the mentees. That was really great. I also had the opportunity of attending the academic achievement awards breakfast, not last week, but I think the week before, with superintendent and principal Edelman, where the valedictorians, salutatorians, and principals, award winners from all the Ulster County school districts are there being honored. What a remarkable group of people. I mean, these are kids that are just really, really brilliant and kind, and you know, they're just like all-around great citizens going forward. Any other trustees? Trustee Mitchell Morell?
Maybe a minor event in comparison, but I went to the Woodstock Elementary end-of-year picnic, and it was so fun, and we had great weather, which it's actually, I think, been rained out the last two years, so that was exciting. And like, there was like, not a DJ, but like a really big speaker, and like, everybody knows like the same dances. Like, they were doing the Macarena, which obviously I know, didn't know that was still around. But like, just, it was so cute. They were all doing these dances and having so much fun, and it was great.
Trustee Lynch, and then trustee Ramondo.
Yeah, it's June, so there's a lot to celebrate. I just want to add two things. One, I just want to also recognize the board and the administration for making the change to invest in the middle school band when we moved the sixth grade up. I know that was a big decision. And having Harvey Boyer there, and Ms. Leonard too, who's also been a huge part of this group's success, has made a huge impression on these young kids, recognizing that they too are valued, and recognizing that their work matters. And there's just, we're very lucky to have both Mr. Boyer and Ms. Leonard, of course, but particularly Mr. Boyer's leadership. And I just want to thank the board for making that investment in that position. The second thing I just want to add is that Bennett also benefited from incredible weather, which is so rare this spring, and had a beautiful carnival last Friday. Thanks to Ms. Allison for also participating. And what was so lovely was that the high school kids, many of them came and also volunteered their time to do face painting and support the group. Mr. Bono, the principal, got in the dunk tank. There was families from both Woodstock and Bennett there participating. The place was packed. I actually had the unlucky job of asking people to go home. So it was just amazing. It could have gone on all night, honestly. So I really want to hold that up as a celebratory moment for all of us in Boysville campus, and to recognize the good work of the Bennett PTA in particular. And the last thing I'll say is that this is my last meeting, and so I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of you. I've learned so much in the last three years, and I hope that you'll continue to count on me when it's needed. And I look forward
I just wanted to speak to the senior awards night as well, and the generosity of our community for our students and their, the diversity of the awards to really meet so many different students where they're at and in their abilities and their strengths and their kindness. And they, each award is just so unique and so special, and the kids, the families were obviously there encouraging and clapping, but to see their fellow classmates cheering and hooting and hollering and being so supportive, it just is a testament to those kids and to this community as well. So thank, thank you to everyone. And it's also my final meeting, and I wrote something because I have to do that. I'm filled with a deep sense of gratitude and hope. I want to thank our community for entrusting me with this role. Being elected to this position was never something I took for granted. It was and always will be a profound reminder of the trust you placed in me to shape the future of our schools and by extension, the lives of our students. I want to keep planting the seed that every child, no matter their abilities, deserves the chance to learn, grow, and shine right in the heart of their community. That means being alongside their friends, their neighbors, their brothers and sisters, in a place where they feel seen, supported, and included. This is what we call the least restrictive environment, and it's where every child has the best chance to thrive. Inclusion is not an ideal. It is a right, and when we build schools and create programs that embrace every child, we build communities that are stronger, kinder, and more just. To the administration, your leadership, tireless work, and quiet strength have taught me so much. I've seen you firsthand, I've seen firsthand how deeply you care about our children, our educators, and our community. You've invited us into hard conversations, made difficult decisions with grace, and keep the students' best interests at the center of it all. Thank you for being the steady hands that guide this district. To my fellow trustees, what a privilege it has been to serve alongside of you. I'm so grateful for the perspectives you bring, the debates we've shared, and the lessons I've learned from each of you. This work is not always easy, but it has always been worth it. I leave this position a better listener, a more thoughtful leader, and a more hopeful citizen because of you. To our students and staff, thank you for being our inspiration. You're the reason why we do what we do. Our students show us what's possible when we nurture minds and spirits, and our staff shows us what's possible when passion meets purpose. Lastly, I want to leave you all with this reminder, there is no greater calling than being of service to others. Whether you're an educator, a volunteer, a student, or a board member, when you serve with heart, we shape the world. When we give of ourselves, we grow. And when we lead with love and integrity, we leave a legacy that outlasts any one title or term. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this work. I will be forever grateful.
I can't say too much right now, because I have to keep working. But I have a lot to say, not just right now. Any other trustees wish to speak? Okay. All right. Item 10.01, the board will acknowledge the public be heard comments from the last meeting. The following folks spoke, Tanze Michaux, Jess Wisniski, see, I already have tears in my eyes, so I can't, I can hardly read. Jess Wisniski, Daniel Saline, Stephanie Bryant, Jenny Jared, and Ben Fleischer. So, we're moving on to public and student comment. The board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda item, any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand it by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the board can't engage in discussion or any, or answer any questions during public be heard. Please know that we hear you and we take all of your comments into consideration. The board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public be heard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. Daphne DeJesus?
Good evening, trustees and superintendent, assistant superintendents. There were supposed to be three of us here tonight, and it's me, and I'm reading for all three of us, so bear with me. And I hope in this case, it's okay to mention names. We'll get to that. You can stop me if it's not. I'm reading on behalf of Jessica Wisniski, who is tied up with Booster Club tonight. Would love to be here. We've been planning this for a while. I wanted to join in expressing my deepest gratitude and well wishes to Assistant Superintendent Amanda Allison. I echo what others will say. We are blessed to have a legacy and continuation of thoughtful, dedicated, and innovative staff at every level, supporting our students with individual learning plans. But from the moment I met Amanda, I knew that she was coming with bold new ideas and a fresh perspective. She saw what was good and had a vision to build on. She came at just the right time, as we were dealing with and recovering from COVID. Her expansion of special reading teachers has had a profound impact on the lives of my own children and that of many others. What I so appreciate about her is that she doesn't only go above and beyond in her day job, but she is incredibly hands-on and dedicated to the entire school community. Her leadership in the Meet, Greet, and Eat, and support for the Ontario Booster Club has been immeasurable. She is always ready to pitch in, ice cream scoop in hand, at our middle school events. Every time I see her, she's engaged in a deep conversation with a parent, listening and learning. The Ontario community is so much better off because of your time with us. It's clear your work and leadership will have a lasting impact. Thank you for leaving us an incredible team. I wish you the very best on your next adventure. Don't be a stranger, we'll be sure to let you know when next year's Meet, Greet, and Eat is. Next, I'm reading for Kylene Leiter, who cannot be here tonight because she's a teacher and she's prepping for class tomorrow. Ms. Allison is a leader whose impact extends far beyond the walls of an office or the language of a policy. She is someone who leads with both compassion and integrity. Ms. Allison is not only a strong administrator, but a true advocate for students with special needs. In a system that often struggles to meet the unique needs of every learner, she consistently goes the extra mile to ensure no student is overlooked, underserved, or unheard. What sets her apart isn't just her understanding of educational law, it's her empathy. She listens. And when a need arises, whether it's for specialized materials, funding for an independent educational evaluation, or to ensure that a student's IEP is being implemented with fidelity, she responds without hesitation. Ms. Allison is committed to fostering an environment where students with disabilities are treated with equity, dignity, and respect, and takes thoughtful action to prevent any form of unfair or unkind treatment. She understands that equity sometimes means doing more, giving more, and being willing to step in personally when the system falls short. She has consistently been willing to stand beside our family during difficult conversations, advocate for both of my children, and ensure that their IEPs are being followed. Her dedication goes well beyond administrative responsibilities. Ms. Allison has personally taken the time to read both of my children's IEPs and IEEs, and has gone even further by educating herself about dysgraphia, to help the Ontario staff better understand my older son's individual learning strengths and challenges. She also took the time to engage in thoughtful, compassionate conversations with me, truly listening to my concerns about my younger son potentially being dyslexic. Despite differing opinions from other professionals, she supported my request for an independent educational evaluation, which ultimately confirmed his diagnosis of dyslexia. She consistently seeks out new programs and professional development opportunities to better equip teachers and enrich the learning experience for students with diverse and atypical disability profiles. Ms. Allison is a reminder of the profound difference one dedicated leader can make in the lives of students and families. She is a reminder of what true educational leadership looks like. Rooted in empathy, driven by justice, and committed to making sure every student, regardless of ability, gets the support they need to thrive. Perhaps most telling is her personal engagement. Despite a demanding schedule, Ms. Allison made time to meet my older son, not out of obligation, but out of a genuine desire to make him feel seen and supported. She responds to emails and phone calls, including the hard conversations that others might avoid, demonstrating a level of care and accountability that is rare and deeply appreciated. Thank you, Ms. Allison, for being the kind of leader who truly supports and believes in every student. I am deeply grateful for your dedication, your compassion, and your tireless commitment to my children. You will truly be missed. Now it's my turn. Having served on this school board previously, I know firsthand, most of the time people come to do public be heard, it is to air a grievance or discuss shortcomings. They feel you should know about, which is great. However, I am here to air my sadness over the impending departure of Amanda Allison, and recognize her for being, quite honestly, one of the best and brightest lights I've had the honor of working with to make sure my child has every resource available to her to help her succeed. Being a parent is difficult enough without the added hurdles and obstacle course of having a child who is differently abled, and in turn, differently viewed and differently treated by other students and sometimes even staff. Neurodivergency can be a very isolating and difficult path to navigate for both parent and child. While I have always had a great experience with everyone involved over the last eight years with pupil personnel and special education, I must say, a beacon like Amanda has made the last several years an absolute relief. And a privilege to get to know her, to work with her and her staff in making this path more accessible, inclusive, and less rocky, and to see what education for differently abled children should look like. Working with Amanda is knowing with my full heart that my child will be provided for and insured of her right to education and wellness. I have always been so grateful to all of the teachers, therapists, aides, and support staff who have worked with Stella over the years. Now I'm pulling a Cindy and I can't see. Being a parent to a special needs child may make you into a person with nerves of steel, mouth of, mouthful of grit, and sleeves rolled up, ready to do battle at the drop of a hat, to make sure that your kid gets their piece of the social, emotional, educational pie. However, I normally end meetings with tears in my eyes over how lucky we are to have these professionals here in Ontario. With Amanda in place though, it really felt like the sky is the limit for kids with IEPs and 504s. With Amanda in place, you could rest easy knowing she was a phone call or email away, and your concerns are genuinely her concerns as well. It is not just an administrator telling you how things are going to be or what they are willing to do. It's a partnership, it's a collaboration, and it's an investment in the student. For some people, this is a job. It is clear that for Amanda, this is a calling. Listening to Amanda, you see quite quickly that her passion is compassion, equity, the whole child, and opening doors for them that in other districts, counties, states, and countries would be shut in their face. I'm sure you all know this, but I want to let Amanda know that our family is eternally grateful for your unwavering devotion and service to not just Stella, but all the children who have benefited from your belief in them. And dedication to giving them the keys to open all those closed doors. Ontario's loss is Red Hook's gain, and though you will be very missed, we wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and we are happy that other children will benefit from having you as a beacon on their path as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. Stephanie Bryant?
I'm not ready. I'm not ready, you guys. I, uh, I'm Stephanie Bryant from Woodstock, New York. I, uh, this is a lot. I, I came here to, to drag the Woodstock community again, because I'm, I'm very upset that Woodstock voted down the bond. That was so gorgeously presented by this board. And not getting Scooby-Dooed, knowing this was Allison Lynch's and Romondo's last day, I just want to say thank you to the entire board. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for running and rallying our community when we were so absolutely divided, and we needed somebody to step up and fight for our rural schools. And you did that, and you went in, and you got on the board, and you did what you diplomatically do with aplomb and grace, and you always bring the conversation forward. Trustee Romondo? The looks that you gave me for two years as I stood up here, it was, you know, I mean, I can, I can take it from, I can take it from some of these guys, but I, and it wasn't until you were so, it wasn't until I came around long enough to understand you and your family and, and what you're doing, and me having no idea what you go through as a mother, and as an advocate, and as a trustee, I, I would have met me in the back parking lot if I were you, and I'm just so grateful that I had all those looks, because it made me question what I was saying, and really, really think about my, all these really smart people know something I don't know. Ms. Allison, listen lady, um, I hope Wood, is it all I'm gonna say? This is all I'm gonna say? Are you ready for this? Woodstock is not having a bathroom baby. Thank you. That's an inside joke. That's just for us. Okay. She got it. Okay. Now on that note, I'm gonna say, I, uh, thank you for Harvey Boyer. Thank you for that jazz program. Thank you for the unprecedented band and jazz Gold with Distinction Awards. And a big reason of why I think that happened is not just Harvey is magic, he is, but it's the coming together of these children at a young level. And... And that's why centralization is good for the children of Woodstock. And last bit about special education. I want to understand how we can have more dialogues publicly, not just us yelling at you. Why centralization will benefit all of the kids in our community? I think that would help the community of Woodstock, liberal, wonderful people that we are, if we understood what equity really means. I think that would help people support this bond. Thank you for letting me go over.
Thank you, Stephanie. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on down.
Hi, my name is Chloe Leiter. Thank you to all of you, especially to Sarah and Megan for your time on the board. And Amanda, I haven't interacted with you, but thank you for all that you've done. It was wonderful to hear those words. I also want to give a special thank you to Emily. Last week, the speech that you gave felt very meaningful to the voice of half the district that would like the board to rethink the plan. So many members of the community had given up and felt like their voice didn't matter after many public behers, surveys that overwhelmingly asked you to keep the schools open, and also after that last minute vote in 2023 where we felt like our trust was betrayed. But this vote, however, reinvigorated everyone's will to fight for all of our children, for the district, and for Woodstock, for our community. I want what's best for all the children, and it doesn't feel like equity has to be in jeopardy when you have multiple campuses. We had multiple campuses for, we still have multiple campuses for many decades. But if the education and the access to resources given between those schools is inequitable, then let's find a way to make it better and more equitable. And closing a school may be the easiest or simplest answer, but it's not the only one. I feel strongly that our youngest children should be in smaller schools in their community. Our district is huge, and it feels like it makes a lot of sense to have Woodstock in the east for the half the children that are in the east, and Bennett in the west for those children that are in the western part of the district. And the wonderful thing is that they all come together when they're older in middle school and high school, and they grow, they continue to grow and learn on the same campus. Closing Woodstock feels like the wrong approach, not just for the youngest children, but also for our district. Woodstock would become even more of a second hometown that will continue to price out its current and potential residents and not attract families. And we would lose current and prospective children from the district. And this is not just hypothetical. It's anecdotal from friends that have already made decisions to not send their children to Woodstock because they are worried about it closing. So I asked the board to consider another approach. And if you look at why people want to consolidate, there have to be other ways to accomplish meeting those needs without closing a village school. And as we just heard from the architects, there are lots of options to make a lower, a bond that's lower. Let's seriously pursue those while ensuring the children have access to equitable education and resources. And I want to share something that Emily said at the last meeting that rang strongly for me. And she said, "It feels at times that we, as a board, have put centralization above all else, white knuckling it at the expense of very important things." I reminded of the phrase, "Do we want to be right, or do you want to be happy?" In the last election, the voters, a lot of the voters shared how they feel, so I ask you guys to seriously please consider another plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Chloe. Would anybody else like to speak? All right. Thank you all. Moving on to the consent agenda. The board hereby approves items number 12.02 through 12.10. May I have a first? Trustee Romando, second. Trustee Goodrich. Any questions or comments?
I have reviewed Schedule U, and it appears to be in order.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Onto contracts and independent contract retainers. Approval of all contracts and independent contract retainers. The Board of Education hereby approves items number 13.02 through 13.10. May I have a first? Trustee Romando, second. Trustee Jerome. Any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Oops. Onto policies. 14.01, first reading of policy 7370, students and personal electronic devices. And 14.02, first reading of policy 3520, extreme heat. We will revisit those policies at our next meeting. Item 15.01, does anyone have any old business to discuss? Tracy Knutson?
Yeah, I'm wondering, just because some of the items, I don't know where we left our new procedures for onboarding new trustees discussion. Because I sent out an email to, I'm sorry, I sent it late today, but I sort of broke down, I compiled the list of suggestions that we went through at the last meeting, put in a couple others that came in on the Google form, and then organized them by things that should happen before the reorg meeting and after. And there's about, it's mostly after the reorg meeting, but there's like five or six that would be good to do. So this is our last meeting before the reorg meeting, so that's why I'm bringing it up now. And I'm sorry, I should have pulled it up earlier. But it's things like, you know, go over the reorg meeting, you know, go over what oath you're gonna take, committee primers if we're gonna do committees that night, things like that. Just things that would be good for the new trustees to know at the reorg meeting.
So I know that we're on a, like, really short timeline before the reorg meeting. And I'm just wondering if maybe you and I could, like, fine tune that list, at least the part of it that you think should happen before the reorg meeting, and maybe find a time to meet with our trustees-elect and, you know, just have a chat with them sometime within the next two weeks. Yes? Is that possible?
Sure. I just wanted to, if any of the trustees got a chance to look at that email or had any comments from the last meeting, but if we're all in agreement, then I think we can just go forward.
How does everybody else feel about that? Is that okay? All right. So we'll just do a tentative list for things that should happen prior to the reorg meeting, and then we'll take more time at another, at a later date to really kind of formalize it. Okay? All right. Good. Any other old business? All right. Any new business? Trustee Jerome?
I had mentioned briefly this meeting that I had with Marie Menendez in Green County, who's doing programs in the city around fiscal responsibility. You mentioned that you do have some programming and that the portrait of the graduate is going to be promoting this aspect of a young learner's life. As we know, people will be going directly into the workforce. They may not be going, they may be running their own businesses, working for small business. So the idea of knowing the basic tenants of how to, financial literacy is the word I'm looking for. That's the phrase. So anyways, if I can introduce you or talk to you more about it, I'm not sure. But I really think as a board, this is another place where we can equip our student population for the future and even potentially the community, as you're doing with the book club. You know, it is an opportunity for this, a very smart woman who is doing this on a volunteer basis to perhaps work with the district. So I'll look to you to help me make an introduction, perhaps.
Great. Thank you. Any other new business? Any requests for information? Trustee Goodrich?
So I have submitted a request. Given the exit polling information from the last vote, a lot of people seem to be interested in time on bus for the centralized campus. So I thought we had a perfect opportunity now for the K through four students that we have right now in Woodstock and Bennett. And to compare the bus times, the time on bus for those students that we currently have with, let's say we had a centralized campus today, what would be the time on bus today versus the time on bus for a centralized campus? And try to put it in a range, like for under 30 minutes, 30 to 35, 35 to 40, 40 to 45, and then over 45, just to give us a general idea what the differences would be for time on bus. And this would not be specific to any, you know, whether it would be on the east end of the district, the north end, the west end. It would just be generalized numbers for the entire campus, for the entire district.
Thank you. Any other requests for information? All right. Our next meeting is July 1st. We'll be here in the middle school, high school auditorium. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Lynch, second. Trustee Romando, all in favor? Aw. Good night.